Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Sponsored Candidate Forum. This forum is for City Council Ward 1. My name is Deborah Bowles.
Ward 2.
Okay, can we do a double take here? Okay, let's take this piece of paper instead of this one. Can we start again, please, Mark? Welcome to the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum. This is for City Council Ward 2. My name is Deborah Bowles. I'm the President/CEO of the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce that proudly serves all of Morrison County. Joining us today are two familiar faces in the community, our incumbent Jerry Canopla and former Mayor Kathy Van Rysingham. This is a forum, it's not a debate. The candidates are to share with us why they feel they are the best person to represent their board, not address their opponent's strengths or perceived shortcomings. The candidates have received the questions in advance, and a coin toss was held to determine who would get the first question, and that will go to Kathy Van Rysingham. The questions will rotate back and forth between the candidates. The chamber wishes to remind the public that the views expressed by the candidates during this session are those of the individual and not those of the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. The candidates have four minutes to respond to the questioning initially, and if they feel they need to rebut after their opponent has said their piece, then they have another 30 seconds to do so. We have an official timer at the back of the room, so we ask our candidates to respect that timeframe. So, starting off today, we will start with Kathy Van Rysingham. So Kathy, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for City Council.
Thank you, Deb, and I'd like to thank you for hosting this today. My name is Kathy Van Rysingham. I am a lifelong resident of Little Falls. I am married to George Van Rysingham. We have four children and 12 beautiful grandchildren. I've been a business owner in Little Falls for six years. I've been the Executive Director with the Little Falls Main Street Organization for five years, Tourism Director with the Little Falls Chamber of Commerce. I did that for four years. And the Executive Director for the Little Falls Convention Visitors Bureau, 13 years. I've been the Mayor of Little Falls for eight. And I've been a lifelong volunteer and ambassador for the community for over 30 years.
Great, thank you Kathy. And why are you running for City Council?
I am running because I love Little Falls. And I think if anybody knows me, I truly love Little Falls. And for the last 30 years, I've been working at trying to make it the greatest and the best that it can be. And I want to continue doing that. There's so much more we can do for our community, and I believe with all of us working together, we can get it done.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our incumbent, Jerry Canopla. Jerry, please introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for City Council.
Well, my name is Gerald Canopla, but as Deb said, most people call me Jerry. I am married, my wife Pat worked at the First Amendment dental. I have two children, grown and two grandchildren. I'm a retired educator. I retired from the Little Falls School District after 36 years of teaching. It was a very rewarding and long career. I am not running for the council because I have a specific agenda and abstract. I am running because I feel I need to give back to the community for all the things that they have given to me and my family in the 36, 40 years that we have lived in this community. I'm originally from Sauk Rapids, Minnesota, and moved here in 1972 when I got my first teaching job. And I stayed in that position here in Little Falls the whole time. I feel that with my ability to listen, my desire to research out facts, to make an informed decision, the ability to compromise what needs to be. I believe that I can make a positive difference in this town and continue the town's growth on its path to success.
Thank you. And then as we're rotating our questions, we will go back to Gerald for the next one. What do you see as the biggest three challenges facing the city of Little Falls?
Well, there are many challenges facing Little Falls, but I believe the first challenge that I have would be the upgrades and improvements that are needed to our water and wastewater treatment plants. Both of these improvements are currently on our 10-year comprehensive plan. They are very expensive. We're currently using a step format at the water plant where the process of replacing the media with the filters to make sure that our water is clean. Just that small aspect of it costs $1 million. By the end of the upgrades, it will cost a total of about $9 million. And along with that, the wastewater plant, which was built in 1984 and had some upgrades done to it in 2002, needs to be upgraded again. MPCA's new rules and regulations have stated that we need to make these improvements, especially with the phosphorus limits that they have put out with us. Now, that's going to require anywhere from $10 to $20 million. And so, the question is, how do we prepare and plan and pay for this? So, we've been working on that, and that's one of the big things. Little Falls has excellent drinking water. It was voted as one of the best drinking waters in the state, and I think it's important that we keep that up. The second challenge, and it's not just to this city, but to every city, I believe, is the aging infrastructure of the city. Taking care of that is a never-ending job. Some of our infrastructure date back to the early 1900s and is showing its age with cracks and leakage and ripauls, you name it. And these water and sewer lanes need to be replaced so that our residents can continue to have clean water and free-flowing sewer. There are many roads that are in dire repair. These projects are all very expensive and cannot be completed at one time, so we prioritize that. My third challenge, I think, facing the city would be that of public safety. With all the crazy things that are happening in the world today, things that we think can't happen here in this small town of Little Falls, but look what happened in St. Cloud just last week. These things are here, and we need to make sure that our police and our fire departments are well-equipped, have the funding, so they can get their training, and they're top-notch and are able to protect us. We often take them for granted until we need them, but Little Falls has an excellent police force and fire department, and they both need to be applauded and thanked and supported for placing their lives in arms' way.
Thank you Gerald. And now to Kathy. Again, what are the three biggest challenges facing our city?
Well, because I stepped into that question, and Jerry answered a large portion of what I would touch on. I guess one of the things I would look at is jobs. I think that we need more jobs in Little Falls. It would answer the problem to, you know, or answer the issue to many of the problems that we're having here. I think that we don't pursue jobs like we should be. I feel that there are many local people that are operating out of their homes, small entrepreneur businesses, that we could be offering incentives to get them, to help them grow. And I think that when you look back at our country, that's exactly what happened, is your small business owners, they grew. And that's what kept our communities alive and built our communities up. So, we've lost Larson's. Basically, there are very few jobs left there. We lost Chris Lainer. And, you know, so we need to look at some other type of form of jobs for our area to help people out. I think that as we look to as our retail, you know, as we see that dwindling away, we also need to try to recruit retail businesses. Years ago, we had a Little Falls Main Street program that I had worked at, and that was their main focus, was to bring small business, retail businesses to the area. And so, I think that that's one thing that we need to be working on strongly, is that to look at and recruit businesses to the area. One of the things too is, I think, the biggest thing is what Little Falls has lacked forever and ever is we don't have a vision. You know, I've sat on committees where, you know, we've done market studies. We did a retail market study years ago, and it was very positive in the things that we could do. But what we need to look at is some of those studies that we've done. We've done the downtown design. We've done that several times, and they went on the shelf. And, you know, a lot of other things that... We had the Governor's Design Team in Little Falls at one point, and they gave us all sorts of ideas for our community. But what we as our leaders have lacked, and what I tried doing as Mayor years ago, was trying to get our City Council to sit down and come up with a vision for our community. And without a vision, we're not going anywhere. We're constantly surrounded. And so, you know, that would be one of my, probably the second thing is I see as one of the biggest challenges. Another thing is, as Jerry had mentioned, is our police force. I feel that we need to have more police officers. As things escalate in our nation, they are going to start showing up here in our community. And I think that drugs is a huge issue. When I was out campaigning, going door-to-door years ago, I was finding out that out of five houses on the block, four of them were rental units, and one of them had, the people had been here a while, and, you know, that they were, we need help. We need the police officers, we need help, and we need more police officers in the area.
Thank you Kathy. And then the next question in rotation, we'll go back to Kathy. What experience do you have in holding public office or being an officer for any entity? How comfortable are you with the procedures to introduce motions, make amendments, and follow normal operating procedures with confidence?
Well, I belong to and worked over, worked on over 98 committees in my 30 years of service to Little Falls. I have been Secretary, Treasurer, President, Vice President, Executive Director, and Mayor. I feel extremely comfortable with procedures in introducing motions, making amendments, and to follow the normal operating procedures of the council and any other organization. And the reason why is before each meeting, I do my homework. I question the city staff. I talk to local citizens, so that when I am making a motion or working on any topic that's on the agenda, I've educated myself before I go into the City Council.
Great, thank you. And Gerald, the same question. What experiences do you have with public office and offices in general?
Well, I'm a newbie to this. The only public office that I have found is the current one that I have as a Ward 2 Councilman. And I was appointed to that position through an interview process by the council, which there were nine candidates that applied for the vacancy that was left when Greg Zilka became, was elected Mayor. As Kathy said, it's amazing how much it takes to run a city. And I don't think most people realize just how much it takes. And it was a real eye-opener for me when I got this position. I too spent a lot of time researching the agenda, trying to get answers, clarifications from the city staff and from constituent's. I feel comfortable, I feel confident following the procedures of the council meeting. I've introduced motions, I've shared my views. I'm not afraid to say no or vote no. I brought back items for further discussions after they've been voted down because I obtained other information and I wanted to have more discussion. So, even though I'm new at this, it's an amazing experience. And I think, you know, everyone should try it and get involved in your community. That's all I've got.
Thank you Gerald. And then we'll come back to you with question number four. And this one talks about the expanding of our recreational facilities here in the community. There has been some discussion about the possibility of a local sales tax to fund a project that would increase our ball fields. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, every time I've been out to that recreational complex, and I live right out in that area there, I have seen families and kids playing out there. The city just purchased a nice additional piece of land out there to further develop that. The area out there has unlimited potential for development and growth and providing an area for activities, recreation for the children and the families in this community. At our last council meeting, there were five young people that came and spoke in the work session. And these five people were former graduates of Little Falls, and they had gone off to college, finished their college careers, and they basically said they did something after that that they never thought that they would do, and that was return back to Little Falls to live and to work. And these five people have their businesses. They are raising their families here, and they are excited to be back. And they're eager to see what's going to happen with the city of Little Falls and its growth. These are the people that we need to encourage to come back. And I think by getting these people to come back, these young kids coming back to their home city, opening up businesses, starting businesses, raising their families, this is an area where we could help them, provide them with a place where they could have, you know, activities. I think not only developing ball fields or disc golf or a splash pad, but I think that whole area out there could be really developed. I mean, if we could go out, like Kathy said, to try to get businesses into our community, I can envision, you know, a hotel out there with a convention center in it, restaurants in that whole area. It's just right out the interstate, it would be easy access. Our current city administrator, John Rodamacher, attended a convention for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and at that time, he tried to get Little Falls as a place that they would hold their, one of their next conventions. But after looking at it, they found that there was just not enough space to hold a convention. You can go to St. Francis, or you can go out to camp, but there wasn't any central location where they could hold all of their meetings. This is something that Little Falls needs desperately. With something like that, the amount of revenue that could be brought in holding conventions is amazing. Plus, it would give the young people, you know, more access to a broader range of activities. So, developing a local option sales tax, I don't see anything wrong with that, putting it forth to the people. The city cannot go through and just say, hey, we're going to do that. It has to be on a referendum. So, I'm saying, hey, I think there's a lot of people that would be encouraged by some of that kind of development.
Thank you Gerald. And Kathy, your thoughts on the recreational complex?
Well, as a lot of people know, I worked on that project really hard when I was Mayor. And actually worked with Senator Guzuka and the Commissioner of MINDOT to purchase the land, which was originally $110,000 that they wanted for it. We got it for $10. I was a part of the group also that put the playground in there. And we developed that, the whole process was a $300,000 project that we did without any city money at all. We did it through donations and grants and a lot of hard work and volunteers. The reason why we looked at that piece was because of the splash pad, because we wanted things for kids to do in the area. And that's why we developed the Mayor's Youth Task Force. But it didn't, at this point, there's not a lot that's happened out there, but as Jerry said, there's hundreds of families that go out there and utilize that facility. And so, I would like to see us develop it. I'd like to see the whole thing done. We did try to put the tax through in the last election. I guess it was a previous one to that, and it was, I think it was a 40%. The folks voted on it here in town. Little Falls tax at this point is 6.85. Baxter's is 7.875. St. Cloud is 7.375. We are paying St. Cloud and Brainerd's tax when we go and we shop there. And when people come to Little Falls, that's what the taxes do here, is that they would help us pay for that tax. I believe 100% in developing a recreation center out there. As Jerry had mentioned, the revenue that it could bring to our community with ball games for the youth. You know, husband and I, we follow our grandkids, and our kids run for years. And the money that we spent in those communities, whether it was spending the night or going to restaurants or whatever, and we can have that here in Little Falls. And I feel 100%, like 100%, that we need to develop that center out there.
And what is your thoughts on the local sales tax?
Well, I think that we need to, there again, find out what the people want. Like, it was 40% that almost made it through last time. And I think that educating the folks on exactly what it is, it may pass this time, but I think that we should see if we can run it again and see what the folks think about it.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go back to Kathy, and this time is the opportunity to dream. What is one project that you would set as a priority for Little Falls if we had unlimited funds?
Well, the project that you're talking about in my, if I was dreaming, is the Cambridley Veterans State Trail. And I've been working on the trail, believe it or not, for about 30 years. Because I started with Terry McGahy, who created the Paul Bunyan Trail. He were to bring that trail to Little Falls, and his dream was to bring it to St. Cloud. And then because of politics, it didn't make it at the time. So, when I became Mayor, you know, 10 years ago now, I created the Cambridley Veterans State Trail Committee. We have, in the last 10 years, we have managed to bring it to the legislature. It has been deemed a state trail. They have allocated money, $75,000 for surveying and that type of thing. And then about two years ago, we got about $1.75 million to actually start the trail. The committee was given the opportunity by the Department of Natural Resources to decide where we're going to start. And we decided to start south of town, coming in from the Suleine Trail. So, we are now in the process of doing a red letter campaign. And the red letter is to make people aware of what the trail is. And we're going to have folks sign it all over Morrison County. So, Pierce is doing this, Royalty, Bolis, Swanville, Randall. We're all doing a red letter in our communities, waiting for people to sign it. So, I'm in the process now of getting it all over town. We've got volunteers who will be distributing it everywhere for people to sign and just to show their support. We will then bring it to the City Council, county commissioners, and our legislature, to the governor, and get them to start really pushing it. This is going to change the face of Morrison County. $32 million a year are spent on trails. The trail is a 32, our trail would be the 32-mile missing link to connect the Paul Bunyan Trail to the Suleine Trail, which would then connect to many other trails in Minnesota. That would create over 400 miles of continuous paved trails, the longest paved trail in the world. And all of the hub, the hub of that would be right in Little Falls, Minnesota. And so, we're trying to get this done, and we're going to do it. We're really going to, we're going to get it in my sights, so, thank you.
All right, thank you Kathy. And Gerald, what would be your one dream project?
Well, I'm a little closer to home with my project. But I agree with you Kathy, that's an excellent plan. And that would definitely bring money, support, revenue, businesses to Little Falls. And I totally support that, and I dream right along with you with that one. Mine is basically one that's been a problem in Little Falls here since I've been in Little Falls, and I'm sure it's been a problem for people that have lived here in Little Falls all their lives. And that is the Highway 27 rail crossing in Little Falls here. That crossing is rated second and fourth dangerous in the state of Minnesota for pedestrian, car, and train crossings. Now, within the next 10 years, MINDOT has said that they are going to replace that crossing. But they're going to replace it as is. Now, I question MINDOT on their creativity. If it's a problem, why aren't they doing something better to fix it? So, my, if I had unlimited funds, would be to spend the money to come up with an idea that we could take that bridge, bring it over the train tracks, and provide access for our emergency services to get to the other side. Right now, the train's crossing, it's competing with their response time. I can see walking paths below the river. I can see, you know, paths, pedestrians popping over without having to worry about the crossing. It's just a matter of where it would go and how it would go so that it wouldn't disrupt businesses. But if I had unlimited funds and I could get the feasibility reports done and come up with a beautiful design that would alleviate that problem once and for all, that's where I would spend my money on.
Yes, so just 30 seconds to recap.
Okay, we actually did a study on that process several years ago. And what they determined is that because of the loop of the bridge, it would take out the post office, Lady Lord's Church, St. Mary's. So, it'd be almost all of the West Side area because of the way they have to get that ramping over that. So, at the time, the study that they did, that would not work. It would take out a large portion of our community.
But I'm dreaming.
But you can still dream.
You can still dream.
All right, thank you Kathy and Jerry. Back to Jerry, the next question. Do you volunteer in our community? And can you give us specific examples such as your faith community, nonprofits, or other organizations?
Being a teacher was a little hard to get out in the community to volunteer when I was stuck in the classroom pretty much all day long. So, for most of those time periods, I was not really volunteering in the community. I was an active member in the holiday players and this kind of stuff. But after retiring, I have been a little bit more active. I am a member of Zion Lutheran Church, where I am on the Board of Elders, and I work with the Sunday School of Children there. I also direct the adult choir, and I'm a member of the building company, Building Committee there. My wife and I also volunteer. We take an elderly Little Falls couple, and we take them out to eat. We take them shopping, we take them to their doctor's appointments, both here and in St. Cloud. We do that pretty much once or twice a week. And until recently, I was a spiritual caregiver at St. Gabriel's Hospital. I was kind of like an on-call substitute minister for people that were dying or were having problems or needed someone to counsel them, you know, for spiritual care at that time. And that basically is what I've had.
All right, thank you Gerald. And I can see Kathy's list, and I will remind you, you only have four minutes to answer. But were you volunteer in the community?
Well, first of all, I have been a member of Friends of Pine Grove Zoo, Morrison County Historical Society, and the fishing museum, Westside Improvement Association, Friends of Crane Hill, Friends of Lynburg Heritage, Friends of Lyndon Hill, Little Falls Business Association, Chief of Commerce, and Morrison County Master Gardeners. I have been awarded Minnesota Quality Service Award, the Mayor's Pride Award, KLT of Good Citizens Award, Master Gardeners in Morrison County, and a certificate of appreciation for developing Maple Island Park. I have, as I had mentioned, I've been on over 98 committees, and some of them, as I go back and look at them, have been quite amazing. But I truly have put my heart and soul into the community, so, thank you.
We're wrapping up at this time. We are just going to have one final question, and it goes to Kathy first. In closing, we touched on a variety of topics today. Is there anything that we did not ask you that you would like to share with the audience?
Well, as I mentioned, some of the things that I have done, but I think a lot of things people probably are not aware of. One is the Maple Island Park. We developed that back many years ago, and my family and I actually took care of the gardens there for a while after developing the gardens and doing the park together. The Mayor's Youth Task Force, which we did, Taylor, Shinet, Twitchell Playground. As I mentioned, we put over $300,000 into that without any city taxpayers' money. Cambridley, the Veterans State Trail, as I mentioned, we did a zebra, sponsored a strike a while ago, my family and I, to actually raise money to get a zebra for the zoo. And one of the projects that, or one of the things that accomplished as Mayor is we reduced city debt by over $11 million. And I know that Jerry and them are working at, we were told that in 2015 and '16, the debts in the city of Little Falls would go down drastically because we have, you know, taken good care in what we were spending money on. The bike and walking lanes in Little Falls, I worked really hard to get that. The city website, we did the retail market study, the Pine Grove Rock Wall. I also helped build the Pine Grove Zoo when we first started. The southern edge of that, all those plantings at the zoo, my family and I did. My mother-in-law was there helping with that, she's here today. Citywide garage sale, we did the first garage sale, was hoping to continue that. That was not to happen. The adoptive spot, and of course, we've done flower plantings downtown, flower fundraisers for many, many years, and so much more. But like I said, there's a lot to be done, and I feel that there's a lot we can do.
Thank you. Great, thank you Kathy. And Gerald, your closing comments?
Well, first of all, being on the council, as I said, as a newbie, this is the first time that I ever attacked or tackled an experience like this. And one, it is a truly humbling experience to be up here. But it's also rewarding, and it's also a learning experience. As I said earlier, it takes much more to run a city than most people do. As I said earlier, it takes, it takes much more to run a city than most people realize. And I had no clue what all it took and did to an accountant. But I have learned that we do have an excellent staff here at City Hall. Our new administrator is doing a fantastic job, and he has visions that I think will lead Little Falls upward. The employees that we have here that work for the city all do an excellent job, and I think that they need to be commended for the jobs that they do. I think those, they're often overlooked. Being on the board, working together in a positive, respectful manner, has, has allowed the council to pursue other things. We have worked with the, the county in cleaning up the area over by the government center and the library and putting in a parking lot there, which if you've driven by there, you can see it's, it's, it's been a little really nice when it's all completed and be a definite benefit for the parking situation that we have in downtown Little Falls. We have, we have also worked with the school district in developing the ball soccer fields on in Bell Prairie. And once that thing gets done, it's going to also be another area which is going to be a big boon to the, the family, a big draw for holding, you know, soccer events and all that from, from the community. I would, being I'm a newbie, and I'm just getting into this, I would like to continue to serve the community as a Councilman for War II. I would appreciate your vote, and I would like to try to continue to make a positive difference in our community.
Great. Thank you. That was incumbent Jerry Canapla. And our other candidate is former mayor Kathy Van Rysenham. We want to thank both of our candidates for being with us today. We also want to thank Mark from Great River Television, who has been recording this for rebroadcast, and the city of Little Falls for allowing us to lose the city council chambers. Voting is on Tuesday, November eighth. The chamber encourages you to be an informed voter. If you have additional questions for these two candidates, please contact them at their leisure. I'm sure they're available to answer your questions. So, thank you for being with us.